I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. And we'd like to begin with the pledge, so please rise. And I would ask that Mrs. Shaffer, yes, you can raise the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first order of business that we took care of already before our closed session was that we voted, nominated and elected a new clerk. So Mary Shaffer is now our clerk. Thank you, Mary. And so now we, I'd like to open a public hearing regarding the proposals and plans for expenditures of the deferred maintenance facility funds. I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Do you have any yellow cards for public hearings?
Can you appoint Mr. Bowman as the presiding secretary of the Senate?
No, just give it to me.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Bowman, our secretary this evening. Thank you. Since Greta is currently in Washington DC, serving on a very important committee. So we're glad she's there, but we're glad you're here, Steve. Item G, adoption and approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, special recognitions and presentations. Our first report is from McKinley School. And I believe we have Sheri Devine here to introduce her students.
I would like to introduce two sixth grade students who are reporting tonight. And we thank you for inviting us. Natalia Lapore and Omar Garcia. While they're getting ready, I would like to introduce their parents to Mr. and Mrs. Lapore are here and Mr. and Mrs. Garcia are here. You guys can see them right here, I think. Oh, we turn this around?
Yes. We kind of turned it at an angle like that so that they can be seen on the video, but people can look at that. So just angle it a little bit. Thank you for coming.
Angle is just a little bit. To speak to both of them.
My name is Omar and I am in sixth grade at McKinley. We enjoy writing both second grade classes and some sixth graders entered a writing contest sponsored by Sonoma County Office of Education. They had to explain why they loved the library. Some second graders loved the library so much, they had trouble keeping it under 100 words. Miss Markham's second grade class are writing book reviews for Copper Fields as the experts program. They are reviewing his favorite books. Copper Fields will write their review and photo and display their writing next to the book and that the students recommend. They plan to take a field trip down to Fields, Copper Fields, to see the display. The children were very excited to see their books published. Fifth graders are racing steelhead trucks and are working with the United Ambassadors at Casa Grande High School to learn more about our environment. They are also studying the solar system. Eight teachers received a 3M projector, otherwise known as interactive whiteboard. The projectors can project the computer screen onto a whiteboard. Teachers deliver lessons in math, science, and language arts. Students can use a special pen to interact with the computer. Our teachers are involved in a lot of professional development this year. Three teachers are involved in Pet Fells. Pet Fells is a three-year project designed to teach teachers PE lessons, skills, phone games, and so students can have fun participating in PE while they get daily exercise. All teachers were trained in December for caring school communities. A program to cultivate respectful and supportive relationships among and between students, parents, and staff. Finally, one of our fifth grade teachers is part of the Teaching American History grant. Our hardworking specialist, Ms. Seal, has earned the Margaret Lynch Memorial Exemplary Service Award from the California, from the California Reading Association for making an outstanding contribution to literacy. Ms. Seal also has had an article accepted for publication in the spring issue of California Reader entitled "A Plug for Reading Out Loud" to your students. We hope you have a chance to read it.
Hi, my name is Natalia Lapore. I'm a sixth grader at McKinley School. I'm a conflict facilitator. Conflict facilitating is something the fourth through sixth graders are doing at lunchtime. We leave five minutes early for the class so we can eat lunch for 20 minutes. Then at 12:15, we go to the counselor Abby and get our badges. We can also get red vests if we want them. Next, we go outside with the lower graders, K through third, and we help them with their problems or play games with them. This year's sixth graders are going on a camping trip to Walker Creek. Each student costs $300. So instead of every student paying $300, we have had fundraisers. Now I'm going to talk about the fundraisers we have done this year and what we are going to do in the future when the weather is better. I helped a lot with the fundraisers. So far this year, we have sold seeds, candy, Christmas gifts, had a bazaar, and had a dance where we sold an array of food and raised $300. We also had a coins for camp drive where each class got an empty jar and put any amount of change or dollar bills in it. Whoever got the most money would win a pizza party as soon as they, as soon as the weather changed. We are going to have a garage sale and a car wash. We have already raised over $5,000. We only have $2,000 left to raise for sixth grade camping trip. Every Thursday, every Tuesday through the month of March, Ms. Weber's class, fourth, fifth, and sixth are doing a cooking class in the kitchen. So far, they have only done one class. They made polenta with fresh greens, onions, and Parmesan cheese. Their cooking teacher made fresh tomato sauce. The students got to take turns stirring, grating up the cheese, and tearing the greens. Then they all sat down and ate some. The teacher was lovely, very patient, and kind. Thank you for letting Omar and I speak.
Thank you for sharing all the wonderful things happening at your school. I appreciate your coming. Now I'd like to invite Principal Jason Sutter to introduce his students from McNear. Who have a report? Welcome.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to introduce the two students that will be speaking for McNear. That's Nora Lindsay and Brandon Ert. And they actually, when I asked them to share their thoughts about McNear, they decided they wanted to take some photos and share with you some things they felt about McNear through some photos. So we're going to set that up real quick. And I think they're planning to maybe come over on this side because they're going to project some stuff.
That's great. Thank you very much. Flash drive and all. Ready to go.
Oh, the lamp.
Right here.
Mitch, could you take the lamp on? Welcome. It's searching.
Can you tell jokes if you want? Entertaining about any dance covers?
Did you have a part you were going to read as well, or it all goes with?
It all goes with this.
Okay.
Does it usually take a while to warm up?
Mitch?
Yeah.
In a way, it's not plugged in.
We are approaching live dog.
I got it.
That's what you can say. Usually just a T-Pee.
Quite that long, yeah. Well, at least we have the right person in charge here.
Say, didn't I see a video when we first started?
Yeah.
Did you look at the video when we first started over at McNear? Didn't I see a YouTube or something like that?
Yeah.
Well, you're the right guy for this.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, my name is Nora and I'm here with Brandon representing McNear Elementary School. When we thought about the most important things at McNear, we decided that there are three main ideas. First, everyone at McNear is safe, respectful, and responsible. Second, we have awesome academics and we have good support from our teachers. Finally, there are many parent volunteers at McNear. The big rule at McNear is be safe, respectful, and responsible. At McNear, I feel safe knowing that the kids will be nice to me and there will be no rules. Everyone feels included at McNear. For example, I feel comfortable walking up to any game and I know that I will be included in it. And everyone follows rules and makes it a better place to be. We feel safe at school knowing that everyone is respectful. One rule is walk in the halls and everyone follows it. Community meetings are something that is here at McNear. These meetings happen about once each month. At community meetings, we talk about what would make the school better. For example, at the last community meeting, we read a story about the star-bellied sneezes and how they kept changing the stars on their bellies to feel like everybody else. This story taught us that it doesn't matter what our outside looks like, that we are always being on the inside. When people are seen making an effort to be safe, respectful, and responsible, they get falcon feathers. Falcon feathers are golden stuff that allows you five extra minutes of recess. This encourages good behavior that we talked about in the community meetings. Academics are another important aspect of McNear. Our education at the school is wonderful. We get to learn history and science, math, language arts, and other subjects as well. Our teachers personalize everything for the students. They aren't lazy. Teachers, the teachers make sure that every student is caught up to their grade level on every subject. Our teachers also use terminology in the classrooms. In sixth grade, teachers use an audio system to make sure every student can hear. Every classroom has a television to see important news and videos that apply to school subjects. Also, there are projectors in the classrooms. Working at your own place is something that we do at McNear School. Here behind your classroom, the teachers work with you to catch up on your schoolwork. Here ahead of us in class, you can work on challenges or go to the next topic in your book. The teachers at McNear allow students to stay after school and get help on their homework. They can also study a subject that they're not good at with their teachers. The teachers at McNear are available almost every day after school. Field trips at McNear School help kids explore the subjects they learn in class in different ways. One example in fourth grade was Gold Country, where we learned about the history of California. We went there to explore what happened during the gold rush. Art is a very important subject at McNear Elementary. Parents come up, come and help us on our art. One kind of art we do is watercolors and drawing. At McNear, we have a garden session. All the kids in your class go to plant seeds, pick weeds, party in the garden. Parents help a lot in our classrooms. Parent volunteers are very common at McNear. Parents come into the classrooms almost every day to give kids more help in their education. Another way parents help our school is they put together an event called the Jobathon. This event raises money for anything that is needed for our school. McNear is a great school where I feel safe and respected and where I can learn knowing I can get help anytime and where parents are there to help. I will miss Mc, I will miss McNear and I feel very prepared for junior high. Thank you.
Lovely touch. Thank you very much. And it looks like you have lots happening that is very exciting at McNear.
Hello, I'm Lisa Moore.
And now I'd like to invite, oh, now we've got to do our regular reports. Don't want to forget those. I'd like to invite our representatives from Kennelworth Junior High, please. Sabrina and Sarah.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
On Thursday and Friday this week, Kennelworth will host two separate special events. On Thursday, a team will visit our English Learner Academy as a part of the English Learner and Language Acquisition Pilot Grant that the district received two years ago. The team will visit classes in our academy and meet with groups of students, teachers, and parents. On Friday, Kennelworth will be hosting a group of close to 25 superintendents and district office staff as a part of the superintendent's instructional rounds of collaborative tips. Visitors will attend classes in the English Learner Academy with a focus of identifying best practices. We have just recently started three separate after-school programs. The first is an algebra boost program for students who are at risk of not passing algebra. The program is funded by a grant from the Sonoma County Office of Education and meets on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays.
The second is a math homework class that helps students who have difficulty completing their math homework assignments. This class meets Mondays and Fridays and is funded by our Title I budget. And the third is a homework support program that is designed to help students that need additional support completing homework from all of their classes. This also is funded through the Title I funds and meets on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. On Wednesday, March 17th, our teachers will be hosting our second Horizontal Articulation Day with Petaluma Junior High. Departments from both schools will be meeting to discuss the results of the semester Common Benchmark Assessments. They will also be developing benchmark assessments to be given at the end of the year. We have just completed the last of three challenge days and plan to administer our school safety survey as one of the measures of change on our campus. We have two exciting upcoming events. Our spring dance is next Friday, March 19th, from 6:00 to 8:30 in our multi-use room. Second, our PTSA dessert auction, a fundraiser that features both student and teacher talent, will be on March 26th. Thank you.
And now do I have Maya and Molly from Petaluma Junior here, Junior High here? Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
The office construction is progressing quickly with only the carpet and a few finishing touches needed to complete the work. The library roof was put on last week and the inside is taking shape for our move in the first two weeks in June. The Courage to Live program will be presented to our eighth graders tomorrow in our multipurpose room. Superior Court Judge Gary Nadler will bring sheriff officers and two convicted drug offenders to the school along with a video and interactive activities to educate students about the law and drug abuse. This is an effective program that we have offered for the last six years. Our sixth grade Philharmonic Band Program made up of our fifth and sixth feeder elementary school students has started with over 50 students in attendance. Then come, they come to PJHS one day a week for band practice. It is a good opportunity for the students to gain some valuable practice and also to get familiar with the junior high before starting in the fall. Rock and Roll 101 has four bands practicing every Friday with adult supporters and musicians from our community. The track team started two weeks ago and has their first meet tomorrow in Windsor. They practice every day after school until 4:30 for all different kinds of events like relay, sprints, shot put, long jump, and high jump. The wrestling team is also in the middle of their season. Our Los Gallandinas Hispanic Dance Troop is practicing one day a week after school. This year's group is comprised of alumni students from Petaluma High School as well as a total of 27 participants from PJHS. We are looking forward to our second annual Noche Day Fiesta night tentatively planned for April when the community will come together to enjoy home-cooked Hispanic food and entertained by the Gallandinas and much more. All departments have been preparing for the upcoming CST test by practicing and studying. The seventh graders completed their writing portion last week and Ms. Donegan made sure anyone that was absent made it up the next day. We wanted to thank Mr. Lou Steinberg for all the years and time he's devoted to Petaluma City School District and provide him with this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Petaluma Junior High School Certificate of Appreciation, Lou Steinberg. In recognition of 19 years of dedicated service to the students, staff, and community of Petaluma City School District. Commitment, leadership, and compassion.
We'll make sure that he gets that and we thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will very much appreciate it. Well, cover up, is that what you're saying? All right. Now, do we have Taylor and Suzanne from Casa Grande High School? Omala?
I'm Samantha Morsenaco.
I love Samantha.
Yes, they, Taylor does swimming, so she had practice. And Suzanne does track, I believe, so she had practice. So regarding athletics, our girls' basketball varsity are now SEL champions. And boys' tennis, baseball, swimming, and track all have their preseason matches going on right now. And regarding leadership, we just put on our annual Mr. GQ show. And for those of you that aren't familiar with it, it's pretty much a male pageant. And this year it was circus themed. The event was really well planned and it was at the Vets Building and over 300 people attended it. Leadership's also now planning Spirit Week and our Powder Puff Game. And we're also putting on a car show. And Drama is putting together their spring production, which is a double feature of comedic murder mysteries. They're called The Murder of Peggy Sweetwater and Murder Me Twice. And event planning is planning a dance for the senior class prom fund as Leadership's putting the finishing touches on it. And the administration, due to increasing enrollment, is planning on hiring another assistant principal to meet the state requirements. And that pretty much sums it up. Thank you.
And do we have Angelica and Danielle for Petaluma High this evening?
Oh.
I'm not Angelica or Danielle. Danielle actually could not continue with ASB anymore, so I think now me and Angelica are the official representatives. So good evening. Our WASC visit is scheduled for March 25th and this will include an interim review. And our Community Achievement Awards are scheduled for April 15th in the Sheraton Hotel at the Great Blue Heron Ballroom. Our Every 15 Minutes Program, which is happening onsite, will occur March 22nd through the 23rd. And the purpose of this event is to educate the consequences of drunk driving. And so they stimulate a car crash right here on campus at our school. And I was actually selected to be involved in it. So an officer comes once in a while and we meet and we plan. And as he was going over the things, he was telling us that there's different rules. And all of a sudden, he's like, so who wants to be in the body bag? And he's like, who wants to be carried away in the helicopter? So it's really intensive simulation. And we have a professional choreographer who resides right here in Petaluma who I hear makes it as realistic as possible. So I'm excited for that. March 22nd through the 23rd. And we recently enhanced our Aiming High After-School Algebra Support Program for English Language Learners by making agreements with parents and students for greater participation in this program. And STAR testing, which begins on April 13th through May 20th, will occur in subject area classes this year. So that means if it's the English portion, the students will take it in their English class, so that makes a lot of sense. And the order of the portions are English Language Arts, followed by Mathematics, US History, Science, and ending with World History. And any absences will be made up on Friday of that week. And for ASB, we just recently started a tradition, GQ, as well this Sunday. And it was quite a show. It was really well put together considering it was our first one. And we had it in the multi, so only 200 people could attend because of the maximum occupancy, which didn't stop us from raising over $4,500. And the, so in ASB today, we were talking about it. And after every event, we delta plus, what went wrong, what could we fix later? And our advisor, Carrie Lowell, was kind of counting money and it was pretty crazy. And then all of a sudden, our senior class president, Brittany Bond, says, I have an extra $1,000. So that definitely added to our revenue that we made that night. And that was a great success. A lot of, the whole community noticed that it was family friendly and it was just a lot of fun. And prom, which is on May 23rd, is at San Francisco City Hall. And right now, the senior members of ASB are doing a walkthrough of what's going to happen that night. So they're at San Francisco right now. And we have teacher support for that, like Madonna Watch, where she's helping too. And as part of this year, ASB is trying to take a new direction in leading the school. And a key aspect of that is trying to get more student involvement by opening opportunities. So the Latino Club is going to host a dance on March 20th, so that should be a lot of fun. And Spirit Week is scheduled March 17th through the 21st. And that whole week will have fun activities. And we also have a March Madness bracket scheduled for next week, so the students will guess who's going to win each basketball game. And there's going to be a high reward for the student who gets like the most accurate predictions, like $250 or something like that. So we have a lot of fun things going on at our school and we're preparing for a lot of educational things as well. Thank you.
And so I think that is, if I could just turn my page. That is all the reports that I think, Mr. Everett, should we? Okay. So we have, we appreciate you coming and letting us know what you're doing on your campuses. Keep it up, keep up the good work, inspire one another. And I'm going to give you a very brief recess because I know that although you'd love to stay at our meeting, you may have homework or something to do. So I will give you a brief moment to recess and then we will continue the meeting. So I will give you a brief moment to recess and then we will continue the meeting.
So we have to change that sheet. Now I had to turn the projector back on.
I already had to make sure that they would get that cord up.
So we're going to, I'd like to re-communicate our meeting and I think we're gonna reorder, we're just going to go to item three, then four, item two, so that our principals can attend in a lack of any. So I'd like to welcome Principals Maureen Carter and Sherry Devine and you've got a wonderfully exciting new opportunity to present.
It's coming up, I can hear it.
Okay. And then you're gonna want to turn it this way and we're gonna want to draw.
So we welcome you, oh, there you go. Your set.
This all came about because McKinley has been losing enrollment, as you probably know, the last few years. And while McDowell is not lost enrollment, they continue in a combination class as class sizes get bigger and budgets get tighter and all the rest of that. So we started looking at what we might do to make both of our schools better serve the children more.
So under what the current post-staffing conditions will be for the next year, we would have combination classes at every grade level. Our upper grades classrooms with average twenty-nine students and we actually all have four upper grade teachers.
McKinley School is looking at two combination classes, one less primary teacher and a total enrollment of twenty-two students. Our enrollment, if it stays the way it currently is, is projected to get as low as two hundred and eighty-six students in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. So it's not, we don't want to be a viable school and we have to start looking at other ways to make things happen.
So this is looking at possible class configurations for next year and so you can see we'd have two kindergarten and a K-one, two first and a one-two, a second, a two-three, a third, a three-four, and a four, a fifth, a five-six, and a six. So we would have the same amount of teachers, but we would, one of the upper grade teachers would be to primary and in sixth grade, we'd have twenty-nine, sixth, fifth and sixth grade, twenty-nine students.
Our class configurations don't look as bad because we have QEIA funding, but we're likely to have some combination classes in our primary grades, which is less than the five-day situation for students who are learning the language at the same time they're learning the school. So if we looked at, if we combined schools, the plan is that McKinley and McDowell primary teachers would both go to McDowell and teach the K through threes and McKinley and McDowell for the sixth grade teachers would come to McKinley to teach the group for the sixth.
So restructuring would result in what we consider one school community that actually has two campuses. And we could combine our parent groups to serve to support those schools. At McDowell, we have the Public Starter Program, which is a grant for the state, and right now it only serves the students at McDowell, so this would expand the number of students that are counted in our district that serve. We also have a North Bay Children's Center preschool on our campus that we share some rooms with and they have both before and after school care, so that would allow greater numbers of students. North Bay Children's Center has a program where some of those children actually qualify for free, or even small amounts of tuition to attend. We would continue Boys and Girls Club on both sites and both of our sites have special day classes. The McDowell special day class is a K-Ex, which is a K-three, sometimes a K-inter. So we serve the primary and McKinley would serve the primary as a department.
We're looking at this for the following education or ventures. We would increase our numbers of certificated staff because of the small class sizes that we have at both schools. We are running combination classes at both sites. Our increased funding that McDowell, McKinley currently has for QEIA, it looks like four smaller class sizes than upper grades, so our upper grades will have twenty-three and fourth grade classes, sixteen and fifth grade classes, and eighteen and sixth grade classes.
As you know, because of the, we would have, we possibly would be able to share some of our, we'd be able to address our ELD, ELA, and MAP level of these. So right now we have it at our several sites, we have some level of these. However, when you don't have as many people at a grade level as, you have to do things across grade level. So for instance, our ELD, we have our first grade does it for being, but then our, for ELA, we go across for the sixth. It just, it makes it, it makes it harder. So we would have the four teachers per grade level at the K through three. We could have ELD with beginners in one group, all the way up to the advanced in another group, just going through one grade level. Definitely a greater support for the university at our site for really concentrating on reading and math. A flexibility in our, including our bilingual support across the schools and we would have busing between the two schools, free of charge to parents that would, so that the parents would only have to be with their child to the site that they're already in.
We're looking at structure and if we do this, this is the structure that we would have. So we'd have four kindergartens, four first grades, four second grades, four third grades, three fourth grades, five fifth grades, four sixth grades. And again, that gives us the flexibility, as I already mentioned earlier, where we have teachers that really are truly able to collaborate with each other and provide much better professional development so that they can serve students in different ways than the previous, as you know.
We're both really excited and our staffs are really excited about the opportunities that we could offer students about combining arms, which is, and we're looking to creating a new school community that serves students in that space.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
How is the parent community taking to this? Because this change always means that a lot of people are uncomfortable.
We had a parent night on February twenty-fifth at McDowell and we had, it was for both sites at the same time and we had a bus that came from McKinley, so any parents that couldn't get over were able to go by bus. We had over three hundred parents.
The auditorium was full with standing rooms, so.
And Steve was there and Greta and I were rolling to answer any district questions. There's a little bit, you know, to be totally honest, there's a few parents that are a little concerned about the logistics of it, but we've been both meeting with parents, you know, on an ongoing basis. Most of the time, once we explain things a little bit more, they they understand. We both have Ready for K on our campus, which is through Adult Ed, and we have a lot of our kindergarten parents that are enrolled in the Ready for K program. So last week, Sherry met with them and I went over and met with them at McKinley and on this Friday, we meet with the McDowell parents. So they're seeing both of us and we've both opened our doors to any questions that we have.
The biggest concern for parents is putting young children on a bus and that's a concern that all of us would have. So when we talk about what that will be, you know, what the logistics will be, that they will put the child on the bus and we'll be a teacher there receiving the bus, I think that allays some fears. I think until it actually happens, people will be anxious and I I understand that, I would feel the same way. I think the biggest selling point for our parents to have children in upper grades is the the fact that there will be no combination classes because they've they've seen how difficult that can be for their children.
The number of class sizes, the class sizes in the upper grades is remarkably low as do this, the QEIA is, they're still eligible even though the school structure would have changed, it wouldn't change the.
They would still be, they would still be the eligible school for QEIA. So we would basically just be increasing the upper grade population, which gains the most by QEA and support class sizes.
And the parents, last year, my first year at McDowell, we actually had two of the major D teachers. So we've had a lot of support from the district and the parents and teachers understood how much of a difference that made when we had a little bit smaller class sizes and were able to, the last two years, we've had one combo class. So we've been able to support one combo class with the reading teacher helping and giving whatever extra support we could. The parents really understand that combination classes are really hard for students who are learning English and learning skills. And so they, when we showed this to them, they really understood the benefit to their children and they really don't want their children in combination classes, so they they're really weighing that and and we're really looking at, really looking at, we want everybody to look at us as one big school, okay? It just happens to be, you know, five minutes by car away from each other.
So my question is similar, it has to do with the Public Starter Program, so my assumption is that it would be only the K-three then on the McDowell campus or would that program be expanded to the McKinley campus as well?
We're talking about expanding the program. Right now, families from both sites would would have access to it, but the program as it exists will still be on the McDowell campus, but we are looking to expand it to the McKinley campus as well.
Thank you very much, it's very exciting, thank you for all your hard work trying to put this together and think it through and appreciate it. Now we'll go back to item two and Mr. Ron Everett, our Director of Educational Services, to come into a report on our physical fitness test results from which year, two thousand?
It's actually, no, no, two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, great.
That's two thousand seven to two thousand nine, sort of a comparative. I'm waiting because I know we have to take good care of those things and we don't lose, they tell us we're gonna lose everything if we pull those out.
Yes, we want it safe to remove.
So I never, I just believe that I did something wrong. I'm thinking of a moment here, it's finding my hardware. I'll make that work. All right, so as you said, this is an annual, oh, here, actually. Follow along if notes, I mean, I'm just gonna show it. Quite well, yes, absolutely, I'll try to do that. All right. So this is a presentation of the resulting from the two thousand nine physical fitness test. We actually are just about in the process of testing again for this year. The window is from February first to May thirty-first, quite a long window. And so this year, I've also divided the results into the elementary district and Mary Collins in the secondary district, primarily because Mary Collins, we're just, so decided to separate them out. And as you're aware, the California State law requires that we administer this test to the fifth, seventh, and ninth graders every year. As I said, between May first and the thirty-first. There are actually six different areas that the test, the process tests and the, and each each one of the areas gives two or three different ways that they can test it to give the the best possible results. And as we get into those, I'll explain them a little bit better. In fact, starting with the elementary district. So just so I can set this up so you'll understand what we're looking at, there are, as I said, six different tests. Aerobic capacity is mainly tested through, well, there's, there's three ways to do it. One is to run a mile, the other is they put tape on either end and then run back and forth so many times and and then over thirteen, you can actually walk, is another test aerobic. Body composition is, most of you're aware, you know, you have height, BMI, height, weight. There's also, I think we have it in this district, although I haven't seen it, there's electronic thing, you grab both sides and it runs through and somehow it tells you how much fat to lean you have in your body, so I have grabbed those things lately. Abdominal strength is a curl-up, like I said, but you are supposed to curl a little bit more. The trunk extender, extensor strength is is actually a trunk lift, you're pulling your your trunk up, see how much strength there is there. Upper body strength is through pull-ups or modified pull-ups or push-ups. And flexibility, it's the one I actually wanted to stake out to try, put your feet up against there and see how far you can reach down there. Felt pretty good that I was able to actually pass that at my age. And the other one is the one where you put your hands behind your back. So these, this is the elementary district's grade five and last year, kind of feeling pretty good, if you'll look at the sort of the, I don't know what color that is, blood red, the one in the middle was that, was not, that was actually two thousand eight's results and four out of the six areas we were growing. And as you'll see with the yellow results, which was two thousand nine, we actually dropped off in every area. Started some conversations with principals about that and clearly we will need to continue those conversations. It it is a concern at the elementary level that, well, it's not a concern as you just heard, and focus really a lot is on math and reading and making sure that those students have those capabilities. And of course, unlike the seventh, the ninth grade, you don't have teachers who are specifically trained in that area. Nevertheless, there is a concern that that we're dropping off in those areas and and we need to have some conversations about.
My question is, the percentage is on the left, is that percentage of the students who.
Thank you very much, yes, that percentage of, the aim is to to reach the healthy fitness zone. The healthy fitness zone is different for each, obviously, each grade and each assessment. And so that's the percentage of students who have met the healthy fitness zone. The next slide is is really the same, but I really need to explain this one. And so the the band at the bottom, there are six tests and so that's the percentage of students who have met all six of the healthy fitness zone in all six of the six tests. The burgundy is five out of six and the yellow is four out of six and it goes down as it go up. The state gold is five out of six. That was the conversation about, you know, students being, you know, hopping out of P.E. or whatever, you know, is five out of six. And so four out of six is at least approaching, but still we have, with that drop-off there, it is a, that's a concern that we need to have similar conversations about. In my communication with the P.E., the P.E.
Specialist.
how to throw a ball, how to take a ball, all those kinds of things, rather than some of the components of the test. Interestingly, Mary Collins performed at a much higher rate. Speaking to Karen McGee, she said, a number of her teachers attended a training last year by Sue Oaks, to give them more skills in presenting, you know, in working with their students in doing physical education. And so, here we see, you know, over eighty percent of the students have met the healthy fitness zone, four out of the six tests, and, you know, a healthy seventy percent in five out of six, which is, as I said, the target. Seventh grade is a little bit more erratic, and it is expected to be a little bit more erratic, because we're looking at a much smaller population. And so when you're looking at, you know, thirty-two, thirty-six, twenty-eight students, four or five students different makes a greater difference than the imperative difference at the...
Just the age. Yeah.
It's just the age, but when we see what, what happens when Ted gets a hold of them.
Yeah.
And so here's the, the same thing, the, what percentage of students have met, six out of six, five out of six, four out of six. And that is mostly increasing in the seventh grade of Mary Collins, and as they develop their expertise around that. So as the secondary district, as we'll see, we're, we are, in fact, performing at a higher rate. And it would be, it's not too surprising, we have teachers that really are expert at physical education, that is, that is their passion, that's what they do. And students who have ninety minutes every other day of physical education, and where the elementary schools, they're trying to fit physical education in amongst the reading, the writing, the science adoption last year. So, really, very much seventy to eighty percent of our students are meeting the, the healthy fitness zone in almost every area. And as you'll see here, we have at eighty percent that have done so in four out of the six areas. And since I have Ted in the audience, I'm sure he is preparing them even more so for the ninth grade, because when you see there, they are hitting the eighty to ninety percent range in almost all those tests. And, and as we think about that, and this is where we want our students to, it's, you know, the last, well, the last, absolutely required, they have one more year that's required sometime, but really to prepare them to be lifelong physical fitness learners. And as you can see here, we're almost five out of six is between seventy and eighty percent, four out of six, almost to ninety percent for all of our students. And just because I can't help it, you know, I'm gonna look at some numbers, just as a measurement, in the county, at the ninth grade level, it's, they have forty point three percent that are six out of six, and sixty-eight point five percent reaching five or more. So we're about ten percent higher than the county and the state, because even a little bit lower than that, with thirty-seven point nine meeting six out of six, and sixty-four point eight meeting five out of six. So, although, of course, we want all of our students in California to be physically in good physical health and active. I know that we have health standard programs here that we're really working on, yes. Do you have any questions? Yes, Mary?
On the elementary, you mentioned that the P P specialist at Grant was talking about skills and all that. I'm pretty sure a while back, we saw the, some of the standards book, so it would be nice to take a look at that and make sure that...
That we are following the standards.
That we are following the standards, but that this other state requirement fits within that.
Yes, and, 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 yes, the physical education requirements at the fifth grade. I mean, she did talk about her trying to increase their aerobic activity.
Right. Well, I know that they start a lot of that in the spring when they're getting ready for the lesson relays, but if they're tested before they really start that...
Give the components of the assessment throughout the year to find out where students are doing and where they need to improve, and so they are doing that as time goes through.
Right.
Yeah?
Yeah. No, 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 it's okay. But, no, it's all right. This one I can't comment on. When you get to seventh grade, there really is a change in the standards. All, we have six standards, two that are in skill related, are developing skill in sports, and another one is, another two are dedicated to fitness and all that kind of stuff. But it's from elementary to junior high, junior high is where we're actually in our standards, is we teach them how to increase their fitness. We actually put it on them, here's how you do it, here's the ways to do it, and then have them do it.
Yeah.
So that they understand how to do it on the ground. So by the time you get to ninth grade, these kids have a real understanding of how, how do I make my upper body strength better? How do I increase my aerobic capacity? And that's not the fault of elementary, it's not even the standard yet, they're too young to get the concept of, well, your heart rate, you know, when you get to seventh grade, they find your heart rate finally figured out. But I think the reflection is, is that in our district, because if you follow the standard at the junior high levels, where you start to see the kids are starting to be taught what it takes to be healthy, so that they can take it with them and do it in their life, because you notice, if they don't do it away from school too, there is a ton we can do about it, so we need to make them interested. So I think that the elementary people, I think, you know, in fifth grade, you probably just get to the little benchmark form and see where they're at, because you're really not, you're not ready yet to understand aerobic capacity to a real degree, where little fifth graders can go out and run on the track on the weekends and stuff. But I don't mean that, but that's just the way it is. So I think what we see here is that we're doing our job, and that by the time they get to the ninth grade and get to high school, they understand what it takes to be healthy. And it looks like they're actually taking advantage of that, they're actually putting it in place. So I think it probably reflects how the standards are and what we're supposed to be teaching, so.
Thanks.
Thanks for the interview. And can I ask one other clarifying point? I know I asked it, I probably asked it last year. Consistently, on every one of those graphs, the trunk extensor, we scored much significantly higher. What exactly is that?
You know, you lay flat on the ground with your hands back behind you, and you see, on your suit, you're pronying, so you're on your stomach, lying flat with your hands down, as you can imagine. And you see how high you can lift your chin off of the ground, and you measure a ruler, if you go twelve inches, you pass.
Oh, my.
And that's what it is. And so it's lower, it's lower on the back flexibility and hip flexibility, which are real important when you get older.
Yes.
And yes, they start, because they actually are organized stretching programs when they get to the middle school, they start to, they're able to bend that back a little bit. But it's better than the sit and reach, because if you can imagine, and this is really true, that like with boys, their legs grow first and then their back grows. So their feet are way down there, they have to show their back. And no, they're originally move, but they can't reach their feet, because their, their bodies are out of proportion if you're doing it. But this is another way to check that back, that hip flexibility. And so that's what that is. They lift, it's a little, it looks like they lift that circus, it's a very short area.
Next time, I'll try to remember to bring a ruler.
We can all... Thank you. Thank you very much.
I do not.
Thank you very much.
I'll leave the light on.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yes, we do.
Second interim report.
Yeah, all good news, right? We wish. Only because Superintendent McGee is not here this evening, and she's a woman, she's a secretary. That I'm forced to speak and share the good and the bad, and really, mostly the ugly.
Yes. Sorry.
So, I, I, yes.
And that's a good.
Right. So it's, it's pretty short and sweet, this agreement. What's changed since our first interim, well, not a whole heck of lot in the current year. We did have a decrease in our unsecured and unrestricted funds of about five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So the majority, there's two things that made up the majority of that decrease. One was a four hundred thousand dollar decrease in our interest income, for two reasons. One is that our, our interest rate is less than half a percent at this time. It's great if you can get money at this time, because it's really cheap, but the return on investment was pretty low. And also, the cash flow impact of the state deferrals is having a tremendous impact on our, on our cash balance, period.
Right. So there's no money to earn money?
No, there's definitely not. There's less money to earn money, that's for sure. And then on top of it, as you'll recall, last year, we, we took the four hundred thousand plus dollars in textbook funds into the, quote, unrestricted area, but we also recognized that we needed to purchase some textbooks, and so we, we did need to purchase about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to date of textbook materials for the classrooms.
That is more than we had anticipated.
Yes, that is definitely more than we estimated, so we, we thought we would be at what, we would spend maybe about half of that. Our average daily attendance, really not much has changed. You can see that we're still, we're still not sure about whether or not we'll be using last year's G A for funding for elementary, and this year, secondary continues to be in decline, and Cherry Valley is really kind of leveling up. In the current year, we have a net decrease of thirty-one eighty-eight, next year, a hundred and forty-seven decrease, and then in eleven, twelve, a hundred and eighty-six. And those are conservative numbers, but we still look forward to them. Our end in balance trends, in the current year, we're, we show a net decrease of three point five-three million in deficit spending. Some of that is prior year, one-time carryover, actually, that's, most of it is prior year, one-time carryover, and, and specifically related to the R fund and the stabilization funding that we received from the federal government. But we do have some deficit spending, but it's probably in the neighborhood of about half a million dollars in the current year. Less our reserves of just under three million dollars, we're estimating our end-in-fund balance to be about six point three million dollars. And going into next year, we see that we have projected three point one million dollars in deficit spending, and then a little bit higher. Actually, I have to apologize, I did notice my financials for eleven, twelve, understate our estimates that they're calling, so I'll have to revise that. Our, our real deficit spending is gonna be a little bit higher than that, but more than a hundred and thirty-seven thousand? Yeah, well, we're hoping it's about that.
Okay.
But, well, and on top of that, what we have right now is we have met with our, we're meeting regularly with the district budget, and the anti-oddens of budget, and these current cuts, additional budget cuts. So this doesn't reflect all the budget cuts that were anticipated, meaning to implement. So, and I'll go through what we did have included in here. For next year, we do have included a proposed two point seven-five percent salary decrease for all employees across the board. This is not a done deal, we, you know, we're still further negotiations and the like, so it's, it's not a done deal, but we're anticipating that. We have two hundred thousand dollars in green utility savings, so we sold, installed a couple of our sites, and we're estimating conservatively that it will be about two hundred thousand dollars, maybe maximum might be two fifty, but we'll bring in a lower number. And we did add back two hundred thousand dollars in interest income, did we do the initial schedule back out?
I mean, the lowest they've ever gotten was like just under three percent historically, now under, we're down to half a percent. And they'll probably average closer to five percent per year. So that's a huge loss, like four hundred thousand dollars of interest income.
Doesn't the federal government have a plan to start putting those interest rates back up, then reduce that?
Well, what I see right, right now, I'm trying to speak that, they're, they're still maintaining the low rates.
The money from, the money that's out there right now, about double what normally they would, you know, it's a one point six trillion dollars, and that starts being sucked back in, and stop buying mortgage backs for paying the rent, they're gonna go up, but the whole, you know, it's such a balancing act, they're gonna try to do, they're not gonna go up, hopefully. They're gonna, if it's done correctly, they'll still lie about it. Because the other, the other way would be pretty devastating, just all the way down.
We do have retiree savings built in, we have seven retirees built into the management budget, as well as the cost of that early retirement plan. We, with regard to the special ed R funds, we're estimating a hundred, one point five million dollars over the course of the funding of that. And you're allowed, as a district, to use half of those funds to decrease compulsion. Right now, in the current year, we've used a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of the seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, that would be anticipated in total, to do the one-time savings. So we're anticipating, planning on using the five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to decrease compulsion for next year's special ed. And what else we have included in there, the proposed ongoing revenue limit cut, the hundred and twenty-one dollar push due that we shared earlier, for an ongoing cut of another million and a half dollars. And actually, just as a reminder, when, when we had previously talked about, I mean, to cut, the cuts that were, are proposed, would have put us where we need to be, this additional revenue limit cut is making us cut another, you know, million and a half dollars in, in the budget, so.
And it's not just working here, because it reflects...
Yes, yes. And they're not, they're, they're not planning on adding this to the deficit that they would owe us, so.
Yeah. And how can they freshen it?
Well, I think they're doing it by lowering the Prop 98 guarantee, and things like moving the gas tax to an excise tax, which then doesn't become part of the Prop 98 calculation, is one of those things that they're doing, to lower the Prop 98 guarantee, plus decrease state revenues and the like. It's an elimination of things, but they're saying that they basically don't owe the one-offs to them.
Deficits, the difference between how much they pay is in the statutory COLA. And since statutory COLA is negative point three eight, gives them an opportunity to decrease the ongoing revenue limits, and that's part of the rationale, and the excise tax. But right now, the legislators didn't go with the governor's proposal to have the change in the excise tax, in fact, the revenue. They voted to save eight hundred thousand, eight hundred million dollars in education, contrary to the governor's proposal in their most recent act that they're sending to, or passed in the year.
In our multi-year projections, we just have seven COLA only, no increase for health benefits, the negative point three eight percent COLA for next year, and then the, the smaller COLA of one point eight percent instead of the two point three percent. Again, going back to our cash issue, they have proposed additional cash deferrals, and to the tune of two point five billion, which translates to about two and a half million for us. And their admission proposal would have included the district from being able to repay the tran, but the legislative chair had revamped it a bit, and put it so that districts will be able to pay their tran supposedly. But it's still, it's corrected, but it still basically puts the cash flow problems of the state onto the school districts, just like every other problem that the K, K1 of education is on for the state. So, what we're anticipating, and based on our current knowledge and the current budget, without additional cuts, we're estimating that our cash would be upside down next June in 2011, by about one point two million dollars, and four point five million coming here. But again, we're still planning on making reductions to the budget that aren't collected in here, that would also bring the cash balance back up. And in worst case, we'd, that we would have to do a temporary one for... And worst case, we'd be, that we would have to do temporary money from another fund at the end of next year to show positive cash balance. But again, we're not anticipating that because of the further budget cuts. And looking forward, we have the next significant updates that are coming would be, one would be in April to see if that negative .38 percent COLA is really, really, it swings all over the place during the course of the year, so we'll see what that turns out to be. And that hopefully, it would be nice to think it was zero. And then later on in the may revise, we'll have an idea of what the legislature is going to respond to the governor's proposal, and the legislative analyst office is suggesting that the governor's proposal is actually the best case scenario, which is not very good. That's not very helpful at this point. And that's pretty much it. I don't know if Steve, you want to come up and add anything else?
We have any questions?
I do. The negative .38 percent COLA is after this year or next year?
Next year.
Next year. So if it ends up being zero when it comes out in April, would that affect that whole while anyone?
Well, it depends on what the governor proposes, or not, excuse, what the legislators do with the proposal. Governors may revise as to how he balances the budget, because it will put that $1.5 billion that he's proposing to reduce school districts, if that went to zero, they've got to find $1.5 billion elsewhere. Hopefully, we'll see some improvement on the revenue side, and there's some glimmer of hope relative to that. January was a positive cash month, the first time in a, not a significant positive, because it went back to where they had projected prior to the governor's January budget for cash in January. The governor had decreased the anticipated state revenues in his January budget, but January came back in at the original numbers and not the decreased numbers. If that were to hold, part of that $6 billion deficit in the current year would be made up. And so, and then they would be building on that for next year. That's one month, and it's really the first good month that we've seen in a long time. The, you know, jobs is another issue, and seems to be leveling out and some slight improvement. Strange that in Jan, or in February, we actually saw more jobs created, but a slight increase in the unemployment rate in the same month. So I'm not sure how that.
Are there dates in which they're measuring the same?
I believe they're the same. I think it's the fact that, you know, more people filed for unemployment, even though there were 32,000 more jobs created. That was one of the, that was the first month of positive jobs in the state in a very long time. So there's some glimmer of hope. How much they will start trying to build a budget around that, the state level is an issue we know. And they've gone too far in the past with projecting things to be more rosy than they turn out to be, and that's why we are suffering through the current year deficit from the July, from the late budget adoption this year.
One other question I had, I know, it's kind of a pointless question maybe, but if we, in the situation of our district having had more than adequate reserves through the years and excellent management, if we are looking at a potential of being upside down with our cash in a couple of years, what's, what are other districts doing?
Well, the two-point, what the state has proposed is 2.5 billion to be taken from districts three times during the course of the next year, but paid back over a 90-day period. What she was, what Midge was alluding to, they made one adjustment in the taking of dollars from districts in February to make that be paid back by April 29th. And the reason they have April 29th is trans have, you have to fund your portion of your trans and set it aside on April 30th. So it was supposed to be for 90 days, and they shortened the period of time for that $2.5 billion so that they could allow districts to borrow and have the ability to repay or set aside the repayment of the trans in April as required. So they, they made some adjustments to the legislations, and both of those were in special session. So as you know, the legislature is still operating in special session at this time and are attempting to address the $6 billion, '09, '10 budget issue. And they have to address it within 45 days, and they're coming towards it, end of that time.
Yeah. Well, yours is going to end.
Yes.
At some point here, so.
They need to give.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item I approval of the minutes from February 23rd, 2010.
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any unitary comments from the public?
No.
Okay. Item K, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. We attended sporting events, including tennis and softball, the FFA annual fundraiser dinner, Pedaluma High School athletic boosters crap feed. And item L, agenda, do I hear a motion for approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion?
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item, no, item two, under administration, human resources, is the resolution 0910-24. The recommended motion is that resolution 0910-24 of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary School District and the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District reducing or discontinuing particular kinds of services for the 2010, 2011 school year be adopted.
Some.
Second. Steve?
Yes, we're asking for the board to provide the opportunity for layoffs because of the uncertain state budget and the fact that we continue to be in declining enrollment in our secondary schools. So this resolution is to provide for the elimination of up to, it was on here, should be 40 points?
Zero three.
Yep, 40.03 FTEs in the current year. And what I would like to do is, Donna, if you could, just take this particular resolution by roll call.
Sure.
I'd appreciate it.
Questions?
Well.
Do you have a question?
Before we do a vote?
Yes.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
Now, this is basically stuff that is on the table, you know, is a fair way of saying it.
Correct. As, as the schools are establishing their master schedules and having fewer students next year, we are, they're basically generating this list. This will give the board the opportunity, without action by March 15th, we can't lay off the teachers necessary to get down to staffing required for the number of students we'll have next year.
Do you have a question? No. All in favor? So she wants to go on and once. Just start with Mary Shaper?
Aye.
Christine Cowell?
Aye.
Troy Sanderson?
Aye.
Carolyn Tenderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Item three, restructuring plan approval. The recommended motion is that the board approves a restructuring plan for McDowell and McKinley Elementary Schools, changing McDowell Elementary to serve students grades K through three, and McKinley Elementary to serve students grades four through six, combining the schools' boundaries and providing bus transportation for students between the two schools at no cost to parents.
Some.
Second.
Yes, this is a program that you were presenting this evening, and is being done to benefit the students in the district. It does come with a slight cost in regards to providing two buses that will serve the elementary schools as well as the high schools next year, and the fiscal impacts included in your report this evening.
So I haven't seen no one here for that.
Yeah, well, it sounds like a lot of the 300 people showed up at the meeting.
They had their opportunity, and the real positive part of that was that the parents appreciated the fact that staffs are doing this in the best interest of kids.
Wonderful.
I've seen the individual class, classes per grade, you know, and the numbers in those classes per grade were encouraging for, given the current budget situation.
Steve, what about, what would happen if that became such a positive community that maybe more people want to move over there? Would they be able to move over, and then would that somehow increase those class sizes back to, I mean, do we have a kind of a concern, like, is it making a, what's the word I'm looking for, attractive nuisance?
Well, we have capacity on those two campuses in that.
Don't think class size.
And the class size, QEIA is going to be with us through 14, 15, through 2014, 15. So we have the ability to provide smaller class sizes and the requirement to provide smaller class sizes, and we have the capacity on the campuses to accommodate that. The one thing that we'd have the possibility of is to change the configuration of the two campuses by a grade possibly, if one of the, you know, if you're a primary or upper grade, because they're serving, you have fried transportation already, and they're serving the same community. It's going to be a very large attendance area, but the transportation will take care of that issue.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Exciting. I know, under business services, we have item 10, the agreement authorization, recommended motion is that the board authorize entering into an agreement with John Stockdale, Stockdale Inspection Services, in the amount of $28,080 state bond funds for inspection services during the Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley Charter School Modernization Project.
Some.
Second.
This is, again, the modernization project. John Stockdale's done a number of DSA inspector jobs for us. Matter of fact, he's currently doing the Pedaluma Junior High.
Oh, that's right.
Admin, mod, and library project for us.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 11, award of bid, the recommended motion is that the board award bid number 01-10, Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley Charter School Modernization to Cotting Construction Company in the amount of $554,000 via state bond funds, and the deputy superintendent of business and administration be authorized to approve change orders up to 10 percent and accept the work as being complete.
Some.
Second.
This project was closed in the last meeting. As you recall, we had a lot of interest in this job, a lot of bidders. This will be the first time that Cotting Industries has done any work for the district, but they're well-recognized in our community. And we took the time to verify we're going to get state funding in the state, and there's not going to be any issues with this. So soon as we award the contract, we will be able to request the entire portion of state funds, because in the first phase, we spent the district funds, so we didn't have our funds that the state had backed, had not come through it there from the.
That was verified.
Or set.
Wonderful. Great.
Nine bids.
Yeah. That is impressive. We don't have to get that many. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 12, the revised deferred maintenance program for 2009, 2010, the recommended motion is that the deferred maintenance budget for 2009, 2010 deferred maintenance work program be approved, and the deputy superintendent of business and administration be authorized to call for bids on those projects where necessary. Do I hear a motion?
Some.
Second.
And this is just the annual approval of the deferred maintenance. We had the public hearing previously, so we have it as a whole.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've already got ADA, so moving on to item M, public report of action taken in closed session. I have first, I'm recording up this resolution as well, right?
Yes.
Resolution 0910-23, during the previous closed session, the board adopted by a roll call vote, resolution 0910-23, to give notice of non-relection to .6 FTE probationary certificated employees for the 2010, 2011 school year pursuant to Education Code Section 44929.21, and to authorize the district superintendent or designee to notify the affected employees. Vote of 4-0. Change our numbers now. Okay. Next, we had case numbers 38, 39, 40, and 41. And I guess I need to read the new set. Case 38, the case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and suspend the psych discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy, and to allow continued enrollment in a district comprehensive school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2009, 2010, and fall semester of the 2010, 2011 school year. Conditions above are subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, anger management counseling, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved five, uh, 4-0. Case number 39, a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and suspend the psych discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy, and to allow continued enrollment in a district alternative school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2009, 2010, and fall semester of the 2010, 2011 school year. Conditions above are subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling and screening, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved on a vote of 4-0. Case number 40, a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and suspend the psych discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy, and to allow continued enrollment in a district comprehensive school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2009, 2010 school year.
Some.
The conditions above, in one moment, the conditions above are subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, community service, and appropriate academic performance. Do I hear a motion?
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved on a vote of 4-0. And finally, we have case 41, it's a case that was presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and suspend the psych discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy, and to allow continued enrollment in a district comprehensive school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2009, 2010, and fall semester of the 2010, 2011 school year. Conditions above are subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling and screening, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved 4-0. Future business, with our calendared activities, for our board members' consideration, the next regular meeting will be held 6:00 PM, March 23rd, at the Pedaluma City Schools Administration Building, right here at 200 Douglas Street in Pedaluma, California. Suggestions for next meeting are students of the month as usual for March, and educational technology update, teaching and learning. Do we have any other requests?
I don't have any other questions. I just thought maybe you might want to mention that we have the two special boards.
That's right. We do have our special board meetings, March 16th and March 18th. And the March 16th meeting is at 3:00, March 18th is at 6:00 PM, and that will be to interview our candidates for the position we need to fill. Okay? Everybody is available that day?
Yes.
Good. Okay, now, seeing no other requests, I would like to adjourn the meeting for signing the papers that we were going to mention. Can we have them signed on? She did. Oh, boy.
It's really good.